So good evening everyone and welcome to the virtual meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Before we get started, I will read the COVID nineteen announcement for public meetings. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N twenty five twenty, members of the Daily City Library Board and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream and submit comments through the live stream website and/or submit public comments via email prior to the public meeting. To submit a comment in writing, please email libraryboard@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M. will be emailed to the library board members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four P M. will be added to the record and shared with the library board members for the public meeting. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. I call this meeting the order. Shall we stand and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have roll call please?
President Logarta.
President?
Vice President Faupoua.
Present.
Trustee Ru Vivar.
Here.
Trustee Santos.
Present.
And trustee Dos.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope everyone's had a chance to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Who shall second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. For the minutes from our last meeting on July twenty first, two thousand and twenty, is there a motion to move?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. May we have the director's report?
Um, sure. Um, so.
Taylor's report.
Director's report. Um, so, uh, at the last meeting in, um, agenda building, a COVID update was requested. Um, unfortunately, we don't really have any, um, new news. There's no, um, set dates or anything like that for, for moving into the next, um, next stage of things. Um, so instead, um, the librarians were kind enough to provide some updates on just what the library is doing because, um, we're definitely providing services and, and we want to make sure um, that everyone knows about them. So we have a, um, a little presentation, but some slides to show you. So one sec. And we're going to start with, um, something brand new, uh, and I'm hoping Cole, um, that you can let me know when you would like me to switch to the next slide and talk a little bit about, um, some of the new online resources that we have added.
Of course, uh, I'm Cole Johnson, manager of the ceremony main library. And I'm going to present this new resource that we have from the California State Library is providing us a two-year subscription to Brainfuse, which is a company that provides online services tutoring, one-on-one instruction. Two products from them. Taylor, would you advance? Uh, the first is Job Now, which is going to help people with career exploration, practicing job interviews, and resume and cover letter creation. And this is actual one-on-one help. So you can log in and have a chat session with someone and improve your skills, have them review your resume in your cover letter and make it stronger to make you a better candidate and to help you connect with careers that may match your interests and abilities. Could you advance, Jill? So some of the things they include are, uh, the coaching, the one-on-one coaching. Something called e-parachute, which is new to me. I'm looking forward to exploring that once we actually get this, uh, it's anticipated it'll be about a week before it's set up because they have to do some behind-the-scenes work to get it set up for us. Um, so they have templates for making a resume. They have live online job interview practice with the coaches, which is from what I've heard in my research is one of the most valuable things for people is, is getting that comfort level. And feedback for the things that they say and just feeling like they know what they're going to do when they have an interview and they don't freeze up on the spot. And also it has a um, a library of things that will help with the U.S. citizenship test and high school equivalency. Uh, GED thing. So this is going to be something that serves a number of people outside, just those who are looking for a job or a better job. Taylor, can you advance? In addition to that, um, there's a companion product called Vet Now, which is very similar in that you're going to get one-on-one help. But this is particularly for veterans and their families. Taylor, could you advance? So it helps them navigate the benefits that are available to them, including housing, healthcare, education, and mental health, uh, with what's called the Vet Now Navigator. So these are experts that are familiar with the various programs and resources available to veterans. They're going to help them transition to civilian employment by looking at what they did during their service and how that can be applicable to, uh, career as they come back into civilian life. And it's going to help them brush on academic skills with the full suite of tools that they offer for those wanting to go to improve their writing for business or those who might want to go to school. And, uh, so that's a very exciting product that we'll have shortly. Um, Taylor, could you advance? These will work in conjunction or will complement the existing, uh, resources where we have. And this is a screenshot of the business and consumer information portion of our e-library, which is at dailycity.org/e-library. And these are a number, you know, we have a number of different categories, but in this category, uh, we have A to Z databases, which is something that lets you search for companies, uh, research them, see what their sales are, how many people they employ. So it can be, and it also integrates job searching. So it can be something that job seekers use. It can also be something that, business-to-business entrepreneurs use as they identify new, repeat new businesses to approach for their services. Reference USA is a very similar product. Uh, they both do kind of the same thing. Eventually we'll be transitioning to only Reference USA, but we have both of them at the moment. Particularly for jobs or, uh, seekers, we have Skillsoft, which is, um, just thousands of books and videos and presentations on improving your skills. Whether you're an entrepreneur, if you want to learn coding, if you need to do certification for your job, if you need to improve, if I was told by Chigla, I need to improve my Excel skills, I could go to Skillsoft and, and do just that and also have something to show for it, saying that, hey, I did do this number of hours. So that's a pretty impressive thing. Uh, the, the other two here are Business Source Complete, which is for business research and our professional development collection, which is particularly for, for educators. But those, those three A to Z databases, Reference USA, Skillsoft, Job Now, and Vet Now will be something that we can use, um, to really assist people who are needing to go back to work after people are hiring or, you know, if they are seeking work now, we can connect them with, with whatever's out there. So that's really going to be something that we're pushing. Once we're able to get people back into the building, access to technology is a huge challenge here. I went to a webinar today hosted by the California State Library and the consultant they had talked about how people who need to apply for jobs really rely on us for access to computers and printing out their resume for, for places that aren't online. So we're really looking forward to that. In the meantime, I'm hoping that it can do some introductory, Zoom webinars for people introducing Job Now and Vet Now. Zoom webinars for people introducing Job Now and Vet Now. Uh, and and let our let our patrons know about those resources that are coming on board. That's it for me.
Thank you so much, Cole. Um, and as Cole said, um, the Jobs, Job Now and Vet Now um, was made possible. By the state library. And I just wanted to um, mention that they've been in tremendous support um, during this time. They're they're always there as a resource for libraries in California, but um, particularly during this time, um, they've just been very active. Um, with small grants and um, other things like this. So it's been great. So some other updates, um, September is uh, library card signup month. And we are um, making sure that um, we're making our centennial card available. We had hoped to have a big um, in-person celebration, of course, um, back when we were planning around it. But um, we are um, celebrating the new card design. I actually, I've got one right here. Um, and giving it out during, well, during this month and going forward um, to honor National Library Card Sign-up Month. And encourage people um, to get a card if they don't have one already. It's an annual thing every September, coinciding, of course, with back to school. Um, we had just not an update because we we are continuing to do curbside service. Um, as we have been doing um, at the ceremony main library, um, I mentioned um, to President Logarta earlier. That um, we were a little short-staffed and I was up there. I was the runner today. And um, it's really positive experience working with the public again and and really great feedback from the public. Um, it's it's very positive and it's one of the reasons that we've really wanted to expand it. We've been wanting to expand it for a while. Um, we've been held up a little bit by making sure that we get our our system as smooth as possible because it's new to us. And um, we've definitely done that. It's it's working really well. And then um, we want to make sure that it's available at the other locations so people can get their, you know, get materials in their own neighborhoods. But there's been a couple of building projects at the Westlake Library that have held things up. But I believe that they will be finally coming to a conclusion or mostly concluded, um, hopefully soon. And I'm not publicizing any dates, but I'm hoping the first week of um, next month. That we'll be able to um, be providing curbside service at our other locations as well. Um, we are also um, still providing uh, books by mail. Um, and we'll continue to do that as long as we we are able to do that. And um, with curbside going well, um, the librarians wanted to to make sure that the public is aware of. Um, all the ways that we can help them find what they're looking for. Uh, they put holes in the in the online catalog, of course, but we've gotten a lot of feedback that that people really miss browsing. And and it's hard to do that on on the online catalog. Um, so the librarians are assisting um, upon request. Either um, people can call in advance or even email, but also um, as happened a couple of times today. You know, a librarian can talk to a person, find out what they're looking for and just grab some items that that hopefully will meet their need. Um, kind of there on the spot. So uh, we call that reader's advisory, but it's um, kind of a a nice recommended reading service for people. Um, upcoming programs, um, summer learning kind of came to a conclusion, but we do have some some upcoming programs. This one, um, I think I mentioned at the last meeting and I was hoping um, the person who's coordinating it is Patricia. If if she wanted to say a couple of words about it. I'm gonna put you on the spot. Are you there, Patricia?
Sure, yeah, I'm here. Yes, so um, for those of you that joined us for our Pilipinas Lit Night uh, last year. This is uh, something very similar I'm working on with Eileen Casanova, uh, San Mateo County poet laureate. And uh, this is actually a four series event and these are just the two happening this week. Uh, it will be streamed on our Facebook page, so it's easily accessible. Um, you wouldn't need to register. You could just go on Facebook. Um, but registering for the actual Zoom event uh, lets people kind of join in on the conversation. Because um, this is pretty much going to be a panel. Um, the authors will be presenting excerpts of their work. And there will be a short Q and A discussion um, at the end uh, where, you know, people can ask the author questions. Um, what inspired their works and such. So um, I'm really excited. This is something that uh, Eileen is actually working on uh, with some of the other peninsula libraries, which is Burlingame Public Library. I believe they've already had some of their um, sessions happen. Um, but yeah, so it it's it's super exciting. Um, I'm excited to see how it will be like tomorrow. And I would love it if you are all able to tune in and join us.
And here are the ones next week. So next week, yeah.
Yes.
So it's it's an amazing lineup. Um, Eileen Casanova has been a wonderful partner, um, certainly a great poet laureate. And um, and we we hope that we'll we'll get a good turnout for these um, amazing authors. It'll be really interesting. Um, we also have uh, an author-related um, uh, program coming up for youth. It's the One Book One County Program and I'm gonna put Sarah on the spot. Sarah, our our youth services librarian. The, this is a partnership with um, other peninsula libraries and the county of this, the county office of education. Sarah, would you mind saying a couple of things about it?
Sorry, my son's playing with Legos. Okay, um, so yes, we are partnering with um, the Office of Education. And the other peninsula libraries. Um, we're gonna be um. Celebrating um, the book George, which is by author Alex Gino. Um, it's a book um, geared for like fourth through sixth grade. About a transgender girl um, who was born a boy and. But um, so she's a, she's a girl and she um, is having trouble. Getting that out to people. And so um, she, there's a play that they're gonna have at her school. And it's um, Charlotte to Web. And she wants to be Charlotte and her teacher won't let her be Charlotte because she's a boy. So um, the story is about how she and her friend um, like figure out a way for her to be in it. And to be able to tell people who she is. So um, that's the One Book One County. Book that we're gonna be reading um, together. Um, and Daily City is going to be doing a storytime, a pride storytime in October. Um, so lots of the county branches are gonna be providing programs. There's gonna be um, a couple of presentations during the month of October. And and then, yeah, everyone's just doing different kinds of um, programs to celebrate. So.
Exciting. It was a um, Stonewall award-winning book. Thank you, Sarah. And then we also have some other fun um, things going on. I don't know if you're aware, but we have a partnership with um, the Senior Center to do a youth and senior pen pal program. I think we have about a dozen participants so far, so it's still in the building phase. Um, but I know Sarah um, and um, one of our library assistants, Catherine, are taking a leadership role with that. I don't know if you had anything to add. It's somewhat self-explanatory, a a senior um, matching with a with a young person.
Yeah, we're just um, having uh, seniors and um, youth um, submit. Kind of like a Google Doc survey if they're interested. And then we um. Pair them up and right now they're just sending their um, letters to the senior center. So it's a safe place. So we're not providing last names or addresses or anything like that. Um, and yeah, it's a small program right now, but we have a lot of people that are saying they're interested. Um, some teachers and librarians would like to start it up at the schools. Right now, we actually have more youth than seniors signed up. So we're trying to work with the senior center coordinator and to see how we can get them um, interested.
Definitely in the building phase. And then we also need to remind people about this. We have Dial-a-Story, which is one of those funny things that um. It's hard to to tell people who are not uh, online about some of the services we have. And this is one of those services. So um, twice a week staff and it it rotates. It, they do different kinds of things, stories and poems, different, all different genres and um, some in different languages. At the, we're limited by our technology. It's a two-minute, just a little short piece. Um, and um, you can give it a call and listen um, twice a week. So we want to let people know that that that's available because the staff are very thoughtful in what they're picking out. Um, I don't know if anyone had anything to add on that one. But just trying to let people know it's there. And then uh, again, to to um, get some feedback. Uh, the group that is coordinating our online virtual um, programs is in the process of doing a survey. Um, before they go into their next planning session. So we're hoping um, to find out from people, particularly the people that do follow us online and do participate in our virtual programming. Um, what they'd like to see, um, because it, you know, it is all new and um, there's certain things, you know, what we always say are bread and butter with storytime. But yeah, we want to try new things and be responsive to what people are interested in. So we look forward to um, getting that feedback. And then I know this is on the agenda for later to talk about partnerships. Um, this is not so much language partnerships, but we do. Um, and this is, I'm sure I've left off probably so many important ones, but um, just some of the partnerships that that are currently active. Or in the the development stage, um, that really help us to reach people. Um, now, you know, with the doors closed, it's a little more challenging. And so um, I know, um, Help Me Grow, San Mateo, um, worked with Patricia in the past. And so they they've reached out and they want to continue that partnership. Cole is working with the San Francisco Peninsula People Power, um, to really make sure to get the word out, of course, about voting. We're always working with the libraries and I think now more than ever, finding um, ways to collaborate that that really um, make it possible. For us to do more things. And then of the public schools, of course, the Office of Ed, um, jobs for youth. I know um, Sarah's got something in the works there. And always, always, Daily City Recreation, their amazing um, partners, brothers and sisters in recreation. And so uh, library staff are working with them on some things they're leading. And then they've supported us in some of the stuff we're leading as well. So I think, oh, and um, I'm just as something that's been going on. Um, one of the bright sides of all of this, um, we have had a lot more opportunities for staff to um. To do staff development activities, um, webinars, virtual conferences. I think Cole mentioned that he did one earlier today. Um, so you know, we did the less fun ones that we were required to do. We did the FEMA FEMA training and the harassment training and all that. But um, there's just been a a renaissance of 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 online training. Um, a lot of it is specific for staff in libraries. A lot of it, of course, timely. Um, there's been, uh, I know, I think there was one today on um, diversity and inclusion. Um, there's uh, some online conferences, the future of libraries. Um, with normally, we would have to, you know, some people have to sacrifice so others can go to these things, but now everyone can do it online. So it it enables um, more staff to participate, which is really nice. So. And that, that was our report on what is going on with the library as of now. Does anyone, any of the librarians have anything to add? Did I leave anything out that we're working on? Are there any questions?
See, there's a question here from uh, Vice President Faupoua. Um, she's asking, how is the survey done and in what languages besides English?
It is an online survey. We are using Survey Monkey because we we have that for our, we have used that historically for our customer satisfaction survey. Um, and it is, it is only done in English, unfortunately. And I I did inquire today, it's not getting a huge amount of response, which is unfortunate, but we'll definitely have to um, give it another push. It is, it is going out on social media pretty much exclusively because that's where um, our participation in those virtual programs is.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have a question. I have a question about the youth senior um, program, the the pen pal thing. Um, I understand that it's a very great program for like um, for kids just to reach out with the senior citizens. But I have a question about how to ensure safety, because I don't think parents would really like kids just writing random letters to old people, you know? Um, so how can we, we ensure that the, that it's safe for the kids?
That is a fabulous question. Um, Sarah was on the the committee that did the planning for this and and they talked a lot about safety. Do you wanna speak about it a little bit, Sarah?
Um, yeah, we definitely took that into consideration. Um, since recreation is our, is partnering with us, um, we do have a waiver on the application. Um, that parents have to agree to um, letting them know that, you know, we are gonna be. We're gonna try to verify everything that's shared, because when the letters do come. Um, that's part of it is we read the letters before they get sent back to the um, the pairs. So um, but just in case something happened that we missed or something that is in the waiver that they sign. When their children apply.
And we're taking great care to make sure that that um, we're not sharing, you know, home address, that sort of information. So that's why it's all going through the senior center as a, as a point of mail um, contact. And then in the waiver, is there kind of like a disclaimer for the parents that, you know, um, stating although we are screening these. Letters, we recommend that you, you know, screen them as well, just in case, something like that?
Um, I believe there's something like that. It's like half a page. It's a huge, long waiver. It's uh, recreation uses it regularly, so we just, um, since they're using it already, we just are using the same exact one. It covers everything, I promise.
Very comprehensive.
Maybe you could provide it for the board to review.
Yeah.
But that, safety was definitely something that that got a great deal of discussion. Thank you.
How does that waiver looks like? Is there any way we can get a copy to share on the screen or we don't have access to it?
Let me see if I have it quickly in. In my file, sorry. It wasn't the one who printed it. Try one more place.
Was that a waiver that was just um. Um, provide during the COVID or it was just the waiver for? Before. Is it the same one?
It was adopted, as far as I understand, it was adopted from um, something that, oh, that works, okay. Um, from something standard that rec uses. I was able to locate it. Let me um, share that. I think. So I'm gonna enlarge it so you can see it. We have a viewer at home and she sent me a file. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I got it.
I think we need to put the logo for libraries. Since it's a. As when you mentioned Daily City Department of Libraries, I think we should inject that in there to make it look more. That's just me.
So separate from the um, the logo at the top, include that in the wording. Is that what you mean? We can do that, certainly. Well, I I think, I believe that this one was was used because it had been um, vetted by, you know, the attorney. So, but we can, if we, we can make some modifications and have it re-rereviewed. And again, I I think the the safest thing is that that there is no. And again, I I think the the safest thing is that that there is no sharing of their their last name and home address, so. And and that the contents of the correspondence is reviewed. Any other comments?
I have something. Thanks y'all for sharing and always appreciate the the amount of work that you all, you all are putting in to engage the community. Um, and I can definitely see just like the efforts that you all are making. This quick question, because I think I was seeing, I think you all did a really good job of like celebrating a lot of like different communities of color, especially as things were coming up throughout the summer. And I think thinking about like, you know, we have Latinx Heritage Month starting today, and then we have Filipino Heritage Month, which I know you all have done some events about from last year. So just curious if you all are doing anything around Latinx Heritage Month or are kind of thinking about different events, especially like now that Daily City doesn't have our usual events that we do. Since we can't be in person, I think definitely turn looking to whatever the departments are doing to get connected with folks and celebrate the different communities we have here.
I'm gonna go ahead and and stop this share. Is that okay? So, uh, yeah, Latinx is going on right now, um, and Recreation is leading that. I I saw it on social media. Um, and the library staff are um working on um recommended reads um for adults and for children. Sarah, I know Sarah, I think, put together the one for children to participate in that, in, you know, in that celebration. And for Casa Yahan, I'm not sure where the planning is at, but I know Patricia and another staff member are participating on the planning committee. Patricia, can you update it all?
Yes, so um we have gotten in touch with two, oh, an author and an illustrator of a book called called Jack and Agu. And um we have Selena, who will be featuring them uh and doing a short story time and a Q and A. And then Recreation's plan, because um they were limited to having, celebrating Casa Yahan uh in a one-day celebration. They were going to make all the edits and put that in the program, pretty much. So um that's one way that we are participating in Casa Yahan. And um I'm also, again, talking with Eileen to see if there's anything else that we can do for a Filipino Heritage Month in October, too. And that's still in the works, so I don't, I don't have any update for that just yet.
I also want to give a shout out to Patricia and the other um people on the communications team, Sarah and and others that um are very thoughtful about some of the, you know, Team Book Tuesday things and and making sure to incorporate a real wide range of diverse voices in those, those kind of regular social media features.
Thanks for sharing. Yeah, I was just curious to know what you all were thinking.
Thank you. Um, I did have a few questions as well. First of all, yeah, I I will um echo Justine's statement in that you all are doing a fantastic job in keeping it interesting. There's so much going on to say that, you know, we're, you know, in COVID. And um, you know, I would say different businesses remain like complacent. You all, you know, do a great job in keeping it fresh, keeping it informational and really reaching out to a diverse community, um, which we all are. I did have a question about Brainfuse. I'm really interested in this. Um, I think it's great. When um is this going to be um brought to the public? I didn't catch that in my notes.
I provided all the technical details the State Library needs, and they said it would be about seven days to set up. There's some, they have to configure how our card prefix works and temporary cards that people get online. So we want to make sure that everything is working as it should, and then it's ready to go.
And and then are all the library staff going to be trained on this platform so that they'll be able to help patrons?
Yes, primarily the people who are doing the email reference and phone reference will get the most. But everyone will be made aware of it, and then the librarians who are doing the person-to-person assistance will definitely get training on it.
Like a hands-on type of training?
Virtually, yes. But like this, kind of thing.
Are there any companies, um, like those like job site platforms that partner with Brainfuse?
It's something called eParachute, which I'm not familiar with, but I was going to look at it once I had access to the product. But eParachute is the one, and then the existing resources we have, um, A to Z databases and Reference USA, they both use Indeed, so they can uh, they can if you go to Indeed.com, it's a job aggregator, but this gives you a little more detail. Like if you find a job listing you want, you can say, oh, well, uh, this employer, you can look at their, your, their your details, how many people they have employed, how many, but their sales are, and get a lot more information about it. So it makes you a more prepared candidate as you approach them.
Yeah, um, just because of, you know, the job market is so scarce right now. I really think that that would create like a great, like end-to-end experience. You know, um, you know, using this platform and then connecting, you know, helping the um patron understand it and then connecting them with the resource of a job board, um, that they could kind of, you know, tie it all together.
I was really happy to hear about this because that was one of my first thoughts when this whole thing started was people are going to be unemployed. And uh, and this fell into our lap that we could do a two-year subscription. I think you're aware that a lot of times we can't do things because of fund restrictions, and so this is a huge cash equivalent because the one-on-one training they provide is usually billed at something like, I don't know, twenty dollars a session trailer, is that right?
Yeah, probably something along that line.
So it's really wonderful that we're getting this and hopefully can help a lot of people.
Any other questions? Okay, so moving on to the trustees' report. Sheila sent us all the BLM statement. I actually have it on my phone. I didn't get to print it out. And it's kind of dim lighting, so I'm wondering if anybody will volunteer to read it for us?
I can put it on the screen if you'd like.
Okay.
Let me see. There we go.
Thank you. Um, how do I move? All right, so the Daily City Public Library stands with the Black community to affirm that Black Lives Matter. The recent horrifying murders of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and too many other Black people brutalized and deprived of their human rights have moved the nation and the world to demand change. We pledge to educate ourselves about racial injustice, to examine our library programs services, policies, and practices, and find ways to improve and to better advocate for justice, equality, and equity for all. Libraries are for everyone. The library is a place for all members of our community to feel safe, to learn, and to grow. The foundation of public library service is our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion in our programs, our services, and our collections. It is insufficient to eliminate discrimination and inequities. We must, in our words, especially our actions, build and sustain systems to support racial equity. We seek and root out racial and social equity barriers in library programs, services, policies, and practices. We will continue to create and maintain an environment of diversity, inclusion, and respect. We will strive to reach and engage disenfranchised people in the community. We will continue to build partnerships to address community challenges. We aim to cultivate true and lasting transformation. I get it all? I read it all, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or ads from the board members?
Looks good to me. Thank you. It also looks good to me.
Yeah, thank you. Looks, looks solid. And Trustee Ruben Bovar, look good to you?
Yes.
So, um, may I put a motion to approve the Black Lives Matter statement provided by the library?
I motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, looks good. Thank you so much for doing that and putting it um up for us to read.
Absolutely.
Okay, so um now that, you know, we have our statement, um I was wondering, um, Sheila, um, is this out, you know, um, on a public-like platform? Are we, um, how are we, um, you know, showing the public that we have this statement?
Um, I I think other libraries, it went on the page of their, of their library board. I don't, I, um, Stephen, does that, that work?
That works for me. Um, and I just want to be clear, this is a statement that you approved for the Library Board of Trustees, right?
Library Board of Trustees, um, we're in, you know, um we're in, I would say, like solidarity with the uh libraries as well. So we just wanted to have one unified statement.
Yep, so we could put it, um, we could put it up on the trustee's site. Um, Sheila, if it, if it's not up on the library site, we could put it there somewhere as well. We can work together and find a good spot for it.
So, um, because social injustice is something that, you know, um I feel like, you know, needs to be talked about. And um, you know, I I know a lot of companies are, you know, making their stance in supporting you know, social injustice, diversity, and inclusion. Um, and I'm glad that, you know, the uh library staff is having some diversity and inclusion training. I actually had that on my notes to see if, um, you know, we were doing that, so that's great. Is there anything else that we can do to support, um, you know, our, our learning or teachings of social injustice within the libraries? Maybe even, you know, something that we can uh fundraise for. Just would like some thoughts on that, in addition to the statements. Maybe, um, I know that the libraries aren't open, but um maybe showcasing some books for some resources.
Yes, so um definitely the, uh, the library community nationwide is very, very tuned in. This, this is um really part of what our mission as libraries is. So um, there's been a lot of of discussion and a lot of collaboration in terms of providing, you know, lots of training opportunities. There's been a ton of different training opportunities, very getting into real nuanced topics. And then um, as as an action item, the Peninsula Library System built a, a good collection on anti-racism and social justice for our overdrive ebook platform, because that's gonna be the most accessible thing to people right now. And I know that um, that the, the material selectors, the librarians that purchase books have also really made sure to put emphasis on that in, in, on their selecting titles. We are buying physical books still, and people are checking them out at Grubside. And um, the, so the communications team have, have been um promoting the materials on social media. Um, and the librarians make, you know, recommended reading lists that are available, you know, as we can call them staff picks on our, um, on our online catalog. Um, so, and I know, um, one of, I think it's the month before last, um, Cole sent out the, the e-newsletter and that was um really the hi- the highlight of that newsletter. So it's, um, you know, I mean, it definitely was a huge focus at the, the time that, that things were happening, but it continues to be an ongoing effort. And and the library staff are extremely dedicated to making sure that our, our collections are reflected, that our programs are reflected and continuing to educate ourselves.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything to add on the staff?
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. So our next topic is um partnerships and language access. Now, I know you showed that slide, um, regarding, you know, the partnerships, so maybe we can, um, you know, revisit that conversation. But in terms of um language access, um, I know that um the fabulous Selena, she created a great um segment on some very like entry-level tablo that she's been um showing on Facebook. And um Vice President Falpua did mention, um, if there could be other languages included, maybe, in the um program. So just wanted to get some thoughts or some feedback on that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, um, I know for um the upcoming Latinx, we were, we're hoping to try and do something in Spanish. But, you know, as we, as we discussed, um, the staffing resources are are limited in terms of language. And and I think that's why um Trustee Falpua um brought up partnerships as a, as one solution to that. It's, yeah, it's definitely is a nice thing to be able to offer. It's somewhat complicated um by the current condition of things, um, as they have to be virtual. It, it intersects with copyright law, unfortunately. So it's, it's not as straightforward as it seems like it could be, but um, yeah, it's always nice to be able to to, to reach people, you know, in their own language. And and Daily City, you know, there's a lot of languages spoken here, definitely.
Would we be able to get any um, like, patrons who are like volunteers, maybe, in the program? Or solicit that to patrons, you know, um, if they'd wanted to uh join?
To, to like record themselves?
Yeah, and then, you know, just to partner with maybe uh patrons who, who might want to do something like that.
It, um, I, I think it's possible. It, um, I, I don't, we haven't been approached, as far as I know, Sarah, have we? Been approached? So that, while you, you actually made a great video. I actually, um, I had to do a video for, for somebody as well, and and so it's, yeah. It's a special skill, being able to, to record yourself, certainly. But I'm sure there are people out there that, that would enjoy doing that.
I personally feel that we're not, we're not trying our best to do this happen, to make it happen. Um, I view how you said it, and don't get me wrong, is that you mentioned the word complicated and it's impossible to do it. I mean, how long we've been around and nothing has been done to it? So I feel that it's like, uh, it's nothing. We're not gonna work on it. There's better other, there's better thing to do than getting the language thing going on. That's how I feel, the way I observe you, Julia. That's how I feel. So you can joke about it, you can laugh about it, but it's serious to me and the rest of the other communities. You can joke about it, you can laugh about it, but it's serious to me and the rest of the other communities.
Jump in here, no one's joking or laughing about it at all, Teresa, I haven't seen that happen tonight at all, so don't know why you're saying that exactly. But you know the what I want to get across tonight is that we need help finding people if we're if we are soliciting volunteers to do this kind of content, right? And as trustees of the library, if you have people that we should connect with, please tell us. Especially in specific language communities, we need your help, you're you're Daily City residents. You're probably our best connection to others in the community. Um and so we're all ears for that type of information from you. But it's not something that we look at lightly at all, we know we're a diverse city and language access is huge for us. It it impacts all of our outreach across, not just in libraries, across everything we do. So we know it's important and especially during COVID. Um you know, there's been a lot of emphasis on translations and um countywide. So it's something that we're actually talking about in meetings quite a bit and take very seriously, it's not a joking matter at all, so. Um please come forward with recommendations. You know, when when you make a request of library staff to to go and do something, this is this should really be a partnership. Um because you're all appointed to this board because you hold a very special status in our community, you know, you you've got so much power to connect us with other people. So that's my plea today is, you know, instead of perhaps pointing fingers, you know, kind of let's partner on ideas on who we should feature in in video content right now. So if you have any thoughts on that, please let us know, we're we're really we're very more than willing to partner on that kind of stuff.
I I am sorry, I nobody's pointing think fingers and I'm entitled to my opinion, Mr. Steven. That's how I observe it and see it from my side over here. So that's my opinion, I'm entitled to my opinions. We have discussed this this matter like before Mr. um Joseph left. And none has done to it, nobody has approached me. And sometimes even if I'm appointed to do this, I just wanna see where it goes. So even if if the trustees are not doing anything, I guess that's what they're paid to do. Is to go find the resources, because if they can find the resources for other two languages, apparently they can find resources for other languages that are here in Daily City. So I apologize if I sound harsh, but uh language is something dear to me and I advocate for it. And that's how I feel.
Okay, I'm gonna send an email right after this meeting um to you specifically, Teresa Al, copy Hugh Sheila. Um so we can get that conversation going, um and that would be me, you know, the city approaching you for um any ideas or support in that area, um if you want to chime in in that way. And if if anyone else, honestly, if any of the other trustees have any ideas, we are all ears.
Go ahead. If I could just say something, um I do see I do think that coming to you with ideas is the first step to this. Okay, and so I what I would recommend is um if we kind of brainstorm at what our primary communities are. We know that the Filipino community is a big one, right? So um but we also have our um Hispanic community, we have our Pacific Islander community. We have um our Chinese community. And so maybe those three are a step, those three um languages. Um maybe us posting something on social media, um hey, I mean, you know, Sarah, maybe we can do something like uh we have Teen Tuesdays. If anybody you know um would like to be featured, please connect to this. And then giving some um you know ideas to the public. Um this is just a fun way to um educate your community, really empowering the community. And if we find a good fit, then editing it and posting it.
Yeah, I agree, um and I just wanted to say that um we are meeting tomorrow, our programming committee um for fall programs, so I'm hoping that we can come up with some ideas. Um that's definitely on our, you know, radar, we definitely wanna do that, it's not that we don't. Um it's just, it's very hard to get people that that are comfortable doing this. I mean, this is reading and doing story time is not for everybody. Um so it's just, I I I've had a hard time um trying to find somebody, anybody that will do anything that's you know not on library staff. So um I just want you to know, we are thinking about it and we will definitely try.
Yeah, I think what's coming up for me um is even maybe like kind of scaling to what to like something that we can start with, I think what what Teresa's point is bringing up to me is even just like the communication about the information. Like if there's a way we can get that those flyers translated so that it gets to families who may not like who English is not their primary language, I think that would be really helpful. Um before even like getting to having folks doing the language access work in events, right? Which I know like can take a lot of capacity, I know that like finding a solid interpreter who's down to do it um is hard and then I don't even know if library has a budget to pay someone to interpret during events. Cause I know that also costs some money and I'm like also thinking about that. Um I'm also curious if you all have a way of identifying what the I don't know like top three language access needs are right now for communities who are paying attention in this time of COVID. Um or just like doing a lot of like distant kind of things. Um and I don't know if the and I think that could be like a survey, a simple survey, you know, of like hey, we need community members to fill this out of like is language a barrier to your access? And if so, what what are languages that would make it more accessible for you? Um cause I would also be curious, I know we have like a huge diversity in Daily City, but I would also be curious around like wanting to meet the urgent and immediate needs of families and young people right now. And if we're not able to meet the needs of communities who are actually like making use of our resources. And I think that's a really big barrier that I would want us to try and figure out. Um yeah, just curious if y'all have an idea of like what are the top language access needs that our folks are feeling right now?
You know, his store, oh sorry, Sheila, if you were about to jump in there. But historically, what we've always been told by community members is that Spanish is definitely a need. Chinese is a need and then Tagalog is not so much of a need, honestly, is what we've been told by people. Um because most of our Filipino community also speaks English. However, we do translate it into Tagalog as well, um but those are the top three for us.
And um just historically, since I've been here, which was a long time, um we have, we've based it on census information about the languages spoken at home. Cause we we have, you know, finite resources and so we we focus on those um based on on the numbers of people speaking those languages at home.
One thing that's happening too is our new website design will have machine translation. So that'll display all the pages and it probably twenty different languages or more. But it's something we don't have now, so that's something that will increase accessibility.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, and I think something um maybe in the future, you know, as you get closer to and I think it's good to think about now, but as we closer to like reopening our centers, I think I know that our libraries are also located in different like like where our libraries are located may have concentrations of different communities, right? And so I think it would be cool to just have on our radar to really start thinking about language access specific to where our sites are. Like are there language access needs that Bay Shore that might be different from language access needs at ceremony and so forth? Um cause I think um I'm deeply thinking about just like the needs of Bay Shore, Teresa, and how some of the language access needs might be different because of yeah, the communities that are hap- happen to be concentrated in that area.
Thank you. Um anyone else? Okay, so we will definitely put um language access as an agenda item um for our next meeting, um but also um you know, I know that Steven will be reaching out um to us for ideas as well. So our next topic is um opportunities for remote support and advocacy. Um you know, um in you know previously uh prior to COVID, um we we're really as trustees, we're really trying to get out there in the community um doing things like coffee with trustees, um reading with trustees, um visiting sites to really talk to librarians to see what um you know, hear some success stories. But also, you know, kind of hear their needs so that we could really truly be a liaison for the patrons, for the library members, um and for city council. So um you know, I just want to kind of talk about that a little bit. Um as I mentioned, you know, in our last meeting, some of the things that we can do um remote would be connecting with the libraries, um you know, connecting with Sarah, connecting with Patricia, um on a one-off. Um even um you know coordinating with um to see how we could help with um social media or um you know, um I know, you know, Sarah has been doing the Teen Tuesdays and the reading and so to really kind of maybe even help her out with that. Um also um helping with Teresa, you know, um Vice President Faukua with the um food drive that goes on. So those are just some ideas um you know that I wanna put out there for the trustees so that you know there is um some connecting with the community in between the meetings that we have. Um I will tell you, I did a financial literacy video um for Sarah and it took me a while to get to her. I think she reached out to me in maybe June and I didn't get back to her till like August. Cause I uh cause I really had to set the time to kind of figure out what this video was gonna look like. And then when I recorded myself, I was like, oh my God, I hate it, this is crazy. I lines is so hard, I talk to people about you know financial literacy all the time. So I really want to commend um you know uh your team um because they do such a fantastic job um with presenting it and I just think it's clockwork um for you, so um that would just be um my my thing. I I just wanna make sure that we, you know, we don't have to do everything that I mentioned, but maybe just you know a one-off connecting with um you know the community or with the libraries. Any thoughts or comments?
I wonder if you you might like to come to our curbside pickup sometime and interact with people that come. Might be a fun thing.
Yeah, definitely, I think um if you send us an invite, you you know, maybe one of us will be able to join. Um when are the curbside pickups, if you could kind of refresh us?
Tu- Tuesday um at well currently they're just at ceremony, but um Tuesday at from ten to one. Uh Wednesday from three to six. And Fri- Friday to uh two to four.
Yeah, so I think um sending us an invite would be a good thing, um because there's five of us. So chances are that one of us um would definitely love to attend and kind of see you in action. I saw it a little bit in action with Sheila and you know, they really you know get their stuffs in and you know all that work prepping. Um yeah.
Might be an interesting opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for the invite, Cole.
Absolutely.
I did um also have an opportunity, um and this is kind of like my intro to um Ms. Victoria um to attend a DCPLA um virtual meeting, they have their monthly meetings. It's on, is it on the same week that we have our meetings, Victoria? But that Thursday?
Yeah, yeah, it is, our our next one is this Thursday.
Um and it's at six o'clock, six thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Usually when when we're doing it in person, it's at at six, but we're starting at five thirty now.
Um and so um you know, I it it is at five thirty now. I remember um you know prior meetings were on like Tuesdays at two o'clock in the afternoon, so nobody could make it. But now, you know, they're later in the day, so um you know, if we can make it to these meetings, chances are we can make it to the DCPLA meeting, which is um you know, once a month on that Thursday at five thirty. So I um encouraged all of any of the trustees to join. Um they do talk about topics that are separate to what we talk about, but um you know, the more um connecting we do, the more partnerships, you know, it it's more transparent. So um I was able to observe the meeting and um one of the things that I did wanna um advocate for DCPLA is um as trustees, we know that um DCPLA works extremely hard for the libraries. Um my ask is that we all support DCPLA by joining. Um I believe the membership, you know, becoming a member and then advocating maybe getting a a friend or family member to also join as well. Because that was the commitment that their board members were doing. So um just wanted to put that out there. Um we definitely want to um help them out so that they do have enough participants to keep this going. So with that, I will go ahead, oh, before I kind of close off, did any of the trustees have anything to add? Okay.
I just wanna um president, um I wanted to see if we can um able to the revisit it our policies and see if any of the policies due to the pandemic and COVID will affect have any effect or uh needed it to to re-edit or modify due to the pandemic? Maybe something that we can put in our agenda for next next meeting?
Um how policies are affected by COVID nineteen?
Yeah, if any of the policies needed to be modified due to the pandemic or the COVID nineteen, or if any is being affected.
Are there any that you can think of, um Sheila, just to give kind of a clear example?
Um so we we have a library card policy um that um you know predicated on people coming into the building in person. And so um we we've made temporary adjustments to that, um so people are able to obtain a card without um showing in advance showing their photo identification and their address. Um and we've been particularly for um you know, we we had one person, I think last week, who is in a different neighborhood, would have had to take Sam Trans and is in his nineties. And so um we're just gonna provide that for him remotely and and send it. So those kinds of things, we are we are modifying without making an actual change to the policy since we are envisioning that we would return to the to the regular policy once this is over. Um so that's just one example, we we can certainly um scour through and and bring back anything that needs to be looked up.
Thank you. So uh Victoria, you are up. Victoria is here to present for DCPLA.
Thank you so much Angela, and I really appreciate your uh kind of reminding everybody to renew their memberships. So I'll send you an email with um information about that, just to make sure. Off the top of my head, I honestly can't remember who who is current and who is not, but I can look that up and just make sure. Cause I know people have trouble remembering themselves. I know that um Justine is kind enough to actually do a recurring donation, that way she doesn't have to think about it. And um that's always a great option, that way you can make sure that you're always um up on your membership. But I really appreciate, you know, if you guys can can be members. I think it's um you know, kind of a small thing you can do to show that we're all working together to support the library. So um and um I you know, on that note, I wanna say like as far as supporting the library, what you were talking about earlier, like you know, you know, the DCPLA is here to support you guys, so please let us know if there is ever anything we can do. I mean, I know we try to find grants and that sort of thing, but like the curbside pickup, I would totally be down to help with that. Like not, maybe not every single week, cause I got, you know, jobs that I have to do. But uh yeah, please, if you are gonna extend an invitation to the trustees, I I would love that invitation too. Trustees, I, I would love that invitation too, cuz I think that'd be really fun. So, um, I actually came recently and saw Sarah, cuz my, um, my daughter and I each had a book. That we had, um, were coming to pick up and I was asking her like. You know, how is this? Is this a burden or is it fun? Uh, how do people feel about it? And she said they actually really enjoy it. Yeah, cuz I, I could see that going either way. I could see it being like, oh, it's hard, but she was really positive and said it's actually. It's actually cool and I think people do appreciate it cuz. I know there are some people that the library is really a big so- social outlet for them, so. Just having that little thing, I think means a lot, you know, we're, we're all trying to figure out what we can do to. Stay connected but stay within the realm of what is safe and. You know, I wanna reiterate what Angela said earlier about, you know, I, I also feel that the library has really. Been proactive about what you can do to try to support the community when you're closed. I mean, I know. For myself with the DCPLA, the first few months I was just like paralyzed. I was like, I can't do anything. I don't know what to do. But I, I feel like the library really didn't go through that stage. I mean, I, I've really seen, Chila's like, yes, we did, but. Well, the perception from, from where I'm coming from anyway, I, I, I feel like. I have just been continually impressed with everything you guys are doing and I know there's hurdles, you know, there's so many. Staffing and money and all those things that are even worse now, but they're always, you know, they're all you're dealing with, so. I just, for one, wanna say that, you know, I appreciate everything you guys are doing to, to try to continue to be relevant. In a new, whole new format, like nobody thinks of the library as being a virtual thing, you know, like that's. That's what it is, is a brick and mortar thing, but I really think that you guys have worked hard to, to do a lot. And I'm very impressed, so thank you for that. Let's see, I guess the, the biggest news that I have is that our, um. One of our directors, Tom Norris, presented at the city council meeting last night, the grants that we gave for summer learning. These are grants that we kind of gave a little while ago, but we're just kind of now doing the official like. City council presentation, but, um, I really appreciate him coming in and doing that, being such a great face of DCPLA. Tom is actually terming out at the end of this year, which I'm sad about. That's six years that he's been with us, so, um. You know, we're gonna miss him. Hopefully, maybe he'll go away for a year and then he can legally, he can come back, but we'll see, according to our bylaws. But, um. You know, we're losing, um, a- another director, Bernie Vidalis, who is the superintendent of the Jefferson Elementary High, uh. High School, Jefferson Elementary School District. He's also terming out at the end of twenty twenty, so we will be, um. Trying to recruit some new directors, so if any of you have anybody that you think would be a great fit, we have a, a whole process by which we. Choose the directors, but we are definitely open to any suggestions if, if any of you, you know, trustees or. Librarians or Steven, anyone has like an idea of somebody that they think. You know, really is passionate about libraries and would like to be on our team, you know, I always, I always need more help, like I. I have all these things I wanna do, but I'm very limited because I'm the actual, the only actual employee. Everyone else is a volunteer and. You know, and it's actually a, a part-time job for me, so, you know, I mean, we really. We need a good solid team to do all the things that I would love to do to support the library, so. We are definitely on the lookout for people who wanna, you know, would like to join us. Either just as a volunteer or as a, you know, a new director. So, yeah, please feel free to submit any, any names of anybody that, um, that you think might be a good fit for us. I've already talked a little bit with. Angela about this, so. And if, um, I have a job description, a board member job description, if anybody wants something that's a little more specific about. You know, what the requirements are to join our team, so I can send that to you if anyone needs it. Notes, oh, um, I appreciate the BLM statement, um, as soon as that's out. Somewhere that I can share it, you know, I definitely let me know or maybe I'll just come across it. And I'd be happy to share that through the DCPLA, you know, uh, venues, so, um. I just appreciate you guys taking a stand and trying to address this because I've. I've talked to a few people, I think this is, the library is in a good position to sort of address. The social, you know, the pulse of the social situation we're in and, you know, I, I. I just think that it's, it's important for us to make a commitment, uh, uh, you know, uh, actual. Concrete commitment to the public that, you know, that, that the library is trying to. Be as equitable as possible because that, that's what the library is all about. And it's important that people understand that and that they feel like that they can come to you guys if they feel like they're. It isn't equitable and, you know, you guys can try to see what you can do, address that, so I appreciate that. Let's see if I had anything else. No, I, I think that was it, so, um, thank you so much for letting me come. It's always nice to see you guys and. Um, yeah, I'll see you next month.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you so much for all you do, um, and supporting us. And we really appreciate you coming to all of our meetings, um, and delivering the message. Um, okay, so we are a little bit over in time. Um, so are there any other announcements or communications before we agenda build?
Uh, I just had one item, um, I, I get your mail from Project Read. So, so you, you guys get an invitation each year, um, for, to the Project Read Trivia Challenge, which is their big annual fundraiser and. Not surprisingly, um, the one that was scheduled for November, um, sixth has been postponed and, and they hope. Hold it again next year, so I just wanted to make sure to communicate that to you.
Thank you. Okay, so agenda building for next meeting, um, I think, you know, um. Having recurrent updates as they come, um, fluid, right, with, uh, COVID, um, is going to continue. Um, until we are back to normal, which, you know, at this point, it's unknown. So if we could put COVID updates on the agenda, but then also, um, you know, talk about the policies. As Vice President, uh, Fawakua mentioned. Um, what policies, um, may have changed due to COVID and, um. You said that you haven't, we haven't changed any in writing per se, right? Um, but do we need to? You know, um, this has gone on a little bit over than expected, so maybe we figure that out. And then we want to talk about, um, opportunities. And, um, you know, um, I know Justine mentioned fine tuning what this three. Language needs are in our area and then maybe. Bringing that to what immediate needs are, um. You know, to be able to support those communities.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I would, and then I know, um, in the past you've done some advocacy too and since. It's a little bit harder to do visits to each of the branches, I think. Um, and I know you always say like, y'all are welcome to volunteer anytime, but I think if you all can give us like specific things in the next month. Um, for us to plug into, that would be really awesome. Like October, October events that like are on our radar so that we can just sign up during our meeting or something.
Yeah, and to Justine's point, you know, maybe all of us won't go, but chances are one of us will, right, to have some representation for whatever events, yeah. Um, so just keep on sending those invites. Um, I did wanna talk about a little bit cuz there's a lot of.